Good evening, it's 6:00. We'll go ahead and get started with regular scheduled board meeting tonight of best Commissioner Stapleton to open us with the indication and pledge. You'll stand?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we're coming for you tonight to address the county's business. We ask you to give us wisdom and to make, let us make good decisions as we move forward. Also, we ask you to look after all our first responders across this great nation. Cross and pray amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is approval of minutes September 16th, 2019 final budget hearing and September 17th, 2019 regular scheduled board meeting. Was there any changes or corrections? Here none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, do I have a second?
Second.
I heard two, was that missing?
Doesn't matter.
Second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda of items two through 13. Any items wishing to be pulled for discussion? Here none, do I have a motion to approve, two through 13? Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. A little, we got about two minutes before we get to our time specific. Don't see our representative Chuck here yet?
No.
Not yet.
Alright, so we'll go on to item 16. We've got a presentation of proclamation proclaiming October 6th through 12th, 2019 National 4H Week in Swanee County.
Thank you Chairman, Commissioners. I wanted to introduce, we have the President and the Vice President of our County Council. So we have Dora Sage, who is the President, and Laura Croft, who is the Vice President. And they're both with the Just Kitten 4H Club. And we have Shannon Croft, who is the volunteer club leader for Just Kitten, who is also with us today. And we're celebrating National 4H Week. So that'll be October 6th through the 12th.
Alright.
You want me to read it?
It's up to y'all.
Okay. Whereas 4H youth across the nation are keeping it green by leading efforts to solve problems in their communities, raise awareness about environmental issues, and make a difference for their futures. Whereas 4H is one of the largest youth development organizations in Florida and the largest in the nation with 6 million young people. Whereas 4H in Florida claims 1,998,032 youth members and 8,132 adult volunteers, while Swanee County's 4H program reaches more than 1,506 youth with help from more than 50 volunteers. Whereas 4H, as a part of the Institute of Food and Agricultural Sciences of the University of Florida, is a program where youth learn through opportunities that provide them hands-on experiences in 4H's mission mandates of science, engineering, and technology, healthy living, and citizenship. Whereas 4H has connected youth and their communities with the innovative research and resources from our nation's 106 land-grant universities and colleges for more than 100 years. Now, therefore you, Ricky Gamble, Chairman of the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2019, as National 4H Week in Swanee County. I urge the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program that enhances our young people's interest in their futures as part of Swanee County 4H Youth Development, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our county and our state university system.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
And a motion by Commissioner Stapleton, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Fleming. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. You ladies have anything y'all want to add? You sure, the mic sure is?
I was going to ask how are the public speaking? Good?
Well, I'll give you each three minutes, go. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Alright, it's now 6:05, so we'll go to our, or it's actually 6:07, but we'll go to our time specific. 6:05 or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider closing and vacating an unnamed undeveloped road in Section 15 and 16 Township 1 South Range 12 East, Swanee County, Florida. We'll have Ron Meeks, Planning and Zoning Director. At this time, anyone wishing to make comment or testify if they would stand for the attorney to swear them in?
Okay. Would you raise your eye to hand, please? Do each of you swear or affirm the testimony that you may give before the board this evening will be the truth to help you God?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Okay, as you, as you approach the podium, would you state your name and address for the record?
Thank you. Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, the request that you have before you is to close and vacate a deeded portion of what was intended to be a road. There was been, the description of the property had been picked up on a title search and survey of a large piece of property. The description of the property that is being requested to be vacated is a strip, is a 15-foot strip along the east side of the east half of the northeast quarter, of the southeast quarter of Section 16, and also a 15-foot wide strip of land that runs the west side of the north half of the northwest quarter, of the southwest quarter in Section 15, all in Township 1 Saint, Township, Township 1 South Range 12 East. What you have is a 15-foot strip on either side of a section line that was deeded out to the Board of County Commissioners in an old deed book dated 1939. That same description is found within that description that was deeded to the Board of County Commissioners at that time. Right now, this is an undeveloped, unnamed road. There's a little trail that's there, but the property doesn't even connect the two roads. You have to the north and south, you have, north you have the 24th Street, and south you have County Route 132, which is Stagecoach Road. This access description actually comes off of 24th Street and basically dead ends in the middle of a, a large, probably 8, 900 acre pasture that's under pivot or irrigation. So-
It looks like it ends, ends under a circle pivot.
Right, yeah. It's about where it's at, and it, it, it doesn't serve any purpose for access or anything like that. So the applicant has requested that the Board of County Commissioners close and vacate that, and then that described land, if you adopt the resolution for approval, would just be absorbed back into what they would own. If you so choose to approve that, the resolution would then be recorded in the official records and would, would take precedent over the old deed book from 1939.
Alright. Anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Meeks?
Alright. Thanks, sir. Here none, we'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, step to the podium, name and address for the record. Are you wanting to speak, or are you just waiting if you need to speak?
He's representing Pinnacle.
Okay.
Another authorization. Did not know if you would have any questions of him, or if he needed to add any additional information.
Alright. Is there anyone else in the public that may wish to speak? Here none? Is it alright, if we just open up the board, any questions they may have for the representative?
Sure.
Do y'all have any-
He voluntarily will step forward.
Does anyone have any questions for-
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions.
I don't have any, I just-
No, sir.
Well, it's pretty easy.
Good evening, Commissioners. Everything that I was prepared to say has already been said. It looks like I am here on behalf of Pinnacle Atlantic. I came with some exhibits, I don't know if you have those already here? Yeah, you've seen the maps?
Yes, sir.
And that kind of thing?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, no, I was here to speak on their behalf, but it's all been said.
You mind just give your name and address for the record?
Kevin Brown. I live over in Alachua, 24801 North County Road 1491.
Thanks, sir. Alright, if no one has any questions and no one wishes to speak at this time, we'll close public comment. Any discussion amongst the board? From looking at the information that was provided to us, it's farmland, it's not a subdivision anymore, I don't have a problem closing it.
Yes.
And if y'all don't have any issues, I just need a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Hale. Any discussion from any board members? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0. Anything else need to add, Mr. Stapleton? At this time, we will close public hearing. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, this time we'll move on to item 15. We have a presentation by our Representative Chuck Brandon.
Thank you, Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for having me. I am especially want, want an honor tonight to come and, and to make a special, special presentation. It is my honor to present tonight this American flag. If we'll have Leah and Gavin, are they here?
They're here.
Come forward. It's my honor to present this flag to you. This flag we called Tallahassee on, on the day of your father's service. We had this, and this is the actual flag, we had it flown above the state Capitol at half-mast that day. So this is a special flag. We want to give this to you and present this to you to commemorate his service to the community, his public service, his selfless service. I know these are probably still some hard times for you. I'll tell you, and it's sometimes it's hard for me to talk about this, but I lost my wife in a traffic accident 12 years ago this November, and my son was 12 years old. And I told him then, I said, you know what you can do? Life is for the living. You go from here and you make your mother proud. Now, my boy takes after his mom anyway. So he is, he is in graduate school at the University of Florida. Every day, he always tells me, and I'll talk to him two or three times a week, he says, I strive every day to make my mother proud, because I know that's what my mom would want. I know that's what your dad would want for y'all. So on behalf of a grateful state, let me especially present to you a very special flag that flew above our state's Capitol. Thank you, we appreciate your family, and we certainly appreciate your dad's service. Police and firefighters and EMTs, they're all special people. They have a special calling, and your dad had that. We will never forget his service. Thank you.
Mr. Brandon, well, thank you for coming. Thank you for doing that. That's two flags today, one that came from the US Capitol that was presented by Congressman Dunn, that was flown on the day of the service in honor of Chief Summers, and then just now from Representative Brandon. I don't know, I'm at a loss of words. All I can tell you is I know that when, when my grandfather died, his military flag was something that I was proud to have and carried memories for me to this day. So your dad did a great job for us, and he's going to be missed. We thank y'all for being here tonight. If anyone else has anything they want to say, if not, we'll move on.
Just echo your words, and like he said, that's the second flag of the day. Our representatives, people here of the great state of Florida, they reached out to this family and to this board, and it's a great group of people, great good people. Thank you, guys.
Alright, thank y'all. Move on to item 17. Betty Lawrence, Director of Libraries.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and community. I'll start with my, I won't be long. I'll start with my usual pitch. The best way to experience the library is to visit the library. So we invite you to either come in person, online, visit our website, those resources, and also our social media platforms. I did bring a show and tell today, it's out in the foyer, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. First of all, I want to let the board know that today was the deadline for the state aid application for state aid funds, and we've submitted that and we're in good shape for that. Just to remind you, that report or that, the report or stats in that report will determine what the library will be getting fund-wise two years out. So we're all set with that, and hopefully everything will go fine. September was Library Card Sign-Up Month, and so we took the opportunity at the library to do a cost comparison receipt for patrons to show them basically what they're saving when they use the public library. I have some of these out there also, if you guys would like to have one. And we registered, last count was 213 new citizens. And I encourage you to take a look at it, because sometimes we take things for granted. You know how you spend money, and it's like, it's getting away, you may not know where it's going, you don't know how much you're spending. None of you do that. But if you take a look at what you get at your public library and compare it to what you would have to pay in a store, I think you'd be amazed at what savings you have. So I just wanted to, to take the, this month to express that to, to everybody. September is also Literacy Month, and we had a great literacy initiative down in Branford this past Saturday. The library and Rotary of Branford introduced what we call Story Walk, and it's the first one that we have had the opportunity to do in this library system. Not very many libraries are doing it right now. It is a copyright service, so they had to go through a process of getting permission and everything. But basically what it is, is a project that promotes literacy, health, and art appreciation. And it's done in an outdoor space. So we did it down in Branford at the Greenway, and the book is divided into pages, it's installed throughout the walk, and family, parents, and kids get to walk together and read the story. It's a child's story. And we had a good time. I want to thank Commissioner Gamble for coming down and being with us. I think that it turned out to be a, a great occasion. And I want to give a special thanks to the Branford Rotary for financing it. And I can't say enough about Ms. Lackey, because she's such a literacy person, and she worked very hard with the library to do that. So we hope to have that on an annual basis. It will be on the Greenway now for three months, and then we have a list of businesses throughout the community in Branford that would like to have it transferred to their places once the three months are up. So it could probably go year-round, but we'll change the titles up at least every year. So the Rotary is excited about it, we're excited about it, so we're going to make this happen, and I was very proud of that. I want to mention that we had the Artis Guild, their show at the library in September this past month, all of the kids that came from the schools, all of the adults, everybody just really enjoyed it. It was like a real special occasion, but then they come every year because they really enjoy the art, and I enjoy it myself. Want to remind you that the Friends of the Library's book sale will be starting on October 10th, and the Friends use their funds to help provide services for our library. So if you get the opportunity to, please come by. If you can support us financially in terms of making a purchase, we would really appreciate it. Do you have questions for me?
Nope. The only thing I had wrote down, you mentioned that right at the end.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, I do have a, a comment. I was there a month or so ago, here at the library in La Vo, got there a little early, and I was going to research something. Want you guys to say anything about that? I do research stuff.
We know you do.
That's right. But the staff was very helpful, and I appreciate them. They helped me navigate myself to where I need to be, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. I have a great staff. And I also need to say that, you know, I think almost every department in this county touched the library, and they take good care of us, and I really appreciate it. All the departments that contribute to what needs to happen there, they do it, and if they're upset about it, I never know it. It's almost like they're really glad to do it. So I want to thank all of the departments for helping the library. Good.
What's the dates on that book sale again? On the 10th through the-
It starts on the 10th, and it lasts for a week and two days, so the brochure is out, out in the foyer, but it lasts for a week and I guess two days.
I was just going to ask, they do a great job in assisting the library, so over that week, if y'all were close by, even if you don't buy anything, just swing by in there, shake your hands, tell them thank you.
Mm-hmm. And most of the programs that we provide in this county is assisted by the Friends of the Library. So if you appreciate those programs, that would be a good way to show it. I did tell you that we had applied for an innovation grant and received it. The farm bought it, we'll be getting that together, it'll probably be a few months, but I'll be coming back to you with information on that. It's regarding robotic farming. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Lawrence? Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to general business. Item 18, discuss a possible board action economic development project at the catalyst site. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we, Mr. Norris and I and others have met with a company that has a pretty strong interest in locating at the catalyst site very quickly. They did question what type of incentives we're offering. They've talked to other counties, and I have no idea what the incentives are in these other counties, but we went through quite the experience with one of the companies that we have located out there now, and I don't envision us ever doing that again. But having said that, what we currently have in place is our, and I'm not going to disclose the name of the company and their activities because we have a confidentiality agreement with them, I'm just going to speak to what we have and what we've been offering to date and ask where the board wants to be, because they'd like to have something back in writing so they can make a quick decision. They're prepared to construct a very large building. They've indicated that they plan to employ in excess of 100 employees out there, and they're pretty excited about their plans and implementing those very quickly. In fact, I'm going on memory, I think they've already got their blueprints all finished on their facility as well, and they're ready to get started pretty quickly. In any event, what we have to date is a tax rebate program that the county put in place a number of years ago, wherein companies pay their taxes, and then it's performance-based. We measure their performance, they have to qualify each year that they make a request for a rebate. We have a program in place that provides for four years, a maximum of four years worth of rebate of those taxes. And we spread that rebate over a seven-year timeframe. The reason for that is that while there's a limit of four years on the actual rebates, it gives us an opportunity to utilize some of that new ad-vulorum revenue that's coming in if we spread the rebate out over a seven-year timeframe. Back when we were dealing with the initial development of the catalyst site and that company that's out there today, I had proposed something with the Commissioners that were in place at the time, and at some point in the negotiations it got removed, I think it was because the company wanted it removed, but I had put in place that rather than just gift them land, that they pay for the land, and then it, well, and our, actually, my plan was to forgive the value of land over a 10-year timeframe, 10% per year over 10 years, in this particular case, if they pay upfront for the property out there that they need, then if the board desired to do so, we could rebate 10% of that each year for 10 years. And it, again, would be performance-based, just like the rebate program that we have in place today. When we met with the company, I told them that we do not have transportation impact fees and utilities impact fees like other communities do. Sometimes those can get up into many, many thousands of dollars, but we haven't implemented those in this county, and I don't see any need to do so. So I'm confident that their, Swanee County is a significant incentive in and of itself. We offer a great deal. We've got excellent access to a rail spur in this case, and excellent access to the two major interstates that are running through the state of Florida. So my question is, do, does the board have a desire to do anything other than what we're currently doing? Do you want to consider a rebate of the value that we establish on the property, if we sell the property and do something like that over a 10-year timeframe? Or do you want to just keep it the way that it is? What's your interest? Because we need to respond in writing pretty quickly. The reason that I need to know this now is because we will need to reduce this to a developer's agreement very quickly, which we've done in the past with others that speak to all the terms and conditions and what they have to perform, and, you know, the jobs that are involved, the job creation, ensuring that the jobs are in existence with the rebate program, much like what the state does.
So what you're saying is this won't be the only time you see it? It'll be coming back to us?
No, it would have to come back to you.
For approval?
I need to, right now, we need to put a draft together and say, quite simply, these are, these are the conditions that we can operate within if you have an interest. And if they have an interest and they want to go the next step, then we'd have to bring a developer's agreement back to this board.
Any questions or comments from the board? I'm fine with us moving forward and looking at- I'm fine with us moving forward and looking at, I don't want to say whatever means necessary, but new ways to attract and compete. We've got land out there that's on the tax or off the tax roll that we're not using. We don't have anybody beating our door down for it. And if we can get it back on the tax roll, then I'm all for it.
I want to mention something to you that it's an incentive to me. And I need to share this with you. And I want to try to tread this kind of delicately. But we have a company out there that is a party to the grant agreements that we have on a very large sum of money, over a million dollars. That company is not indicating to date that they are performing in accordance with the agreement. The difficulty that creates for us is that we have a requirement to repay the funds that are spent from that grant. I've tried to contact my grant administrator in Tallahassee. These are federal funds, by the way, to see if they will allow us, if another company steps in that will create the job performance and meet that criteria that this initial company did, enter into an agreement to do and has failed to do so to date. I'm questioning whether or not they'll allow us to switch that over, utilizing another company's job creation performance. It's important to me because I still need to build a rail crossing out there. And we need to build some turn lanes on US 90 because the second company that located at the catalyst site is in the business of bringing materials in on rail, offloading, loading it onto large trucks and then distributing it to various businesses and locations in the area. Currently, they're driving on unpaved roads, great distances to get back out to US 90. And we have a state appropriation for $300,000 that I applied for a couple of years ago. We have it in place. Those plans ought to be nearly finished. If they're not finished now, is Jimmy in here tonight? Is he? There you are. Those plans finished for 175th? Okay. So Jimmy's going to have those finished by this time tomorrow is what he's trying to say. In any event, my hope is to construct that road soon. A critical piece of that is probably the reason they're not finished is because that road crosses the railroad to get back to 90. So that's the piece that's in question right now. And that's the significant piece that affects the over million dollar grant that I'm talking about. So if we do this, it puts us in a much better position to preserve the million-plus grant. I think it's 1.3 million.
That sounds right. And just for the record, we have not spent the 1.3 million. We won't spend it until we know that we have a business out there that's going to comply. And so that's.
We spent a small amount.
A small amount, but not, we haven't built the cross.
Yeah, we haven't hurt ourselves yet. We have the ability to pay back if we have to. I don't really want to. So, and I'll just, by way of illustration, just tell you that if we have property out there, for example, if we've got property out there that's 10 acres and we decided it's worth $15,000 an acre because of the rail spur, this is developed industrial site now. And I'm just using this by way of example. I'm not establishing numbers on property. But if we've got $150,000 worth of land, is it worth entering into a rebate agreement on that and give back a portion of it over 10 years' time for 1.3 million dollars? That's a pretty good swap in my mind. And that 1.3 is incredibly important to us. We don't have that kind of money to build that crossing and tie back into US 90 and do what needs to be done out there.
No, and I do believe that without that crossing, we hinder the future growth. Most of your companies, especially if there are any kind of logistics that's going to come in, aren't going to travel three miles down a dirt road to a residential area to get to their industrial site.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't seen this. It's, I think it is a problem that we have to address some way. If this is an opportunity for us to address this and possibly keep from having to repay that grant and get all of the work done at the same time. I think it's a win-win for everyone. My biggest concern is jobs here in Swanee County. And I'm also concerned about the lack of performance with Clausner. So I don't have a problem picking up jobs somewhere else if that's what we need to do. But I don't have a problem with it either at this point. And the board can choose either way. I don't mind the 10-year rebate, but I think that it ought to be part of the negotiation process.
Is that a motion to give Mr. Harris and myself and Mr. Norris the authority to negotiate and start a developer's agreement?
I'm not scared. Yeah, go ahead.
Using the land as a.
Mr. Chairman, if I could get the maker of the motion to allow us to utilize Mr. Pavat just a little bit.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
That was assumed. I mean, that was just a given. So I have a second.
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 Motion by Commissioner Richardson. I got a second and a third. I got Mr. Fleming on the second, Stapleton on the third. Any further discussion?
I'll just say this, Mr. Chairman. I agree with what you and Commissioner Richardson said and Mr. Harris that it kind of takes care of a lot of issues going on out there. And it also helps create jobs, tax base, et cetera. And that's what that thing was designed for. That's why we, previous boards built that area up. And I think it's a good idea.
Anyone else?
I want to say that on top of that, that I wasn't a big supporter of this whole thing in the first place, but before I became a commissioner. But the county has invested millions of dollars in this and a lot of time and effort in creating jobs for our folks. And to be able to have this opportunity out there, it would be foolish for us to back out now or to start to waver on that commitment. We need to press forward and make sure we do our best for local and corporate communities to create jobs. And this is what this is about. But having said that, let me ask you this question. Is there any, is there any way easement is available in any shape or way or form in the 175th Road around to the entrance, the backside into the entrance of Clausner's? I know where the rail spur goes and everything. But is there any land that borders where we can have an easement to pave a road all the way around through the catalyst site rather than just up from 90 and that's it? We got, right now, we have 90, we'll have 90 going in on 175th, but then we'll have another road going into Clausner through the other road.
He's talking about, I guess, are you talking about extending the access? The main access road that goes into Clausner.
Is there any way to extend that access road around in case we have problems with railroad? And I know we've talked about this with the new company.
I'm not sure where exactly you're speaking. You're talking about.
Be the far north end.
The existing, the existing drive that comes into Clausner. And you're talking about trying to extend it to where?
I know it dead ends right now pretty much to the.
Where that mound of dirt is.
Yeah, where that mound of dirt is. But the railroad spur is pretty close to that area.
Correct.
And the way, I think the land from Matco comes up, it seems like it dead ends at there as well, correct? Is there any way going, can we go around those properties if we had to, to provide access into that catalyst site in an alternative way? Through an alternative route like that?
Mr. Chairman.
North of Clausner, we don't have any property other than that, what, a 15-foot buffer or something like that? It's not a lot.
Well, we have a significant buffer. It's 150 feet wide. But you've got retention ponds and portions of it. And in fact, there's a retention pond there before you get to that large mound.
We have an easement there where you're talking about putting the crossing in. When it comes across off of 90.
Yes.
There's an easement there. Gives us access to all the properties.
Well, if I construct 175th and get the crossing in, we've got what we need. Because it satisfies our need to service every, the whole south part of that catalyst site. The north portion, northeast portion is all Clausner. So I would say that if we, if something happened and we couldn't get across that rail and we needed an alternative route, I'd probably try to come in off of 169th somewhere and turn back to the west, south of Clausner. And even if we had to purchase some more land there to get through, it would be easier than moving a mountain of dirt.
Yeah, where that road used to be.
That was a massive undertaking to build that.
Talking about where that access road along the railroad tracks used to be.
I'm not even talking about that one.
No, it's on past where the bark plant was at. There's a section of road through there. That's what you're talking about, correct?
50th, 50th is there. We closed that off and built for Clausner to be built. So we could come in on 50th and turn south and work our way back around. Or we could buy property to the south of that, a couple of five-acre lots and probably create what we needed to cut back through from 169th to the west.
I just wanted to know if there was an alternative route. That's all. If we're stuck with this.
Helicopter.
Besides that, yeah.
We, I can get it in there. Yeah, if all else fails with that railroad, then I can create a route somewhere to get us in there that would be shorter than going all the way out to Falmouth and coming back the way it's currently being done.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we had a motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Out opposed, same sign. All right, item 19, discuss a possible board action. Any issues associated with water and the wastewater plant at I-75 and 136 interchange? Do you have anything new for us, Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
All right. Item 20 is call for additional agenda items. We have one. Discuss a possible board action, non-conforming lots. Turn our attention back to Mr. Harris, county administrator.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm going to try to summarize a situation that exists and phone calls that some of you have received and I have received, Mr. Pavat has received. There's a piece of property off of Dry Prairie, 112th, in a sort of a platted subdivision. The property was purchased recently by a gentleman that was very much aware that it was designated a non-conforming lot. And that's simply land development regulation language and comp plan language. But essentially what it means is that as of a date certain, the properties that existed were recognized as conforming lots. And if anyone divided them thereafter, they became non-conforming lots. And I won't go into all of the reasons that state government tried to put a stop to that and put pressure on county governments to do it. But in any event, it's been in place for many, many years. Having said that, when this particular property that has a house on it became available, there were a number of people who inquired of our zoning department and spoke to our zoning official about whether or not it was conforming or non-conforming or had any other issues. And I've spoken to some of those people myself. This particular gentleman decided that he was going to go ahead and buy the property anyway. And after he purchased the property, he decided that he wanted the Swanee County Commission to change the rules so that it could be designated a conforming lot. Mr. Pavat and I have had several conversations about this. And I've spoken to some of the commissioners about it. In fact, I think I've spoken to all of you about it now. But a few weeks ago, when Mr. Pavat and I were discussing this, we decided that I would make contact with this gentleman and ask him to put in writing specifically what it was that he was being precluded from doing on that property as a result of this non-conforming designation on the lot. Each of you were copied on the email when he responded to me. And if you read the email, probably the foremost thing that you will recognize is that he didn't answer the question. He didn't tell me what he can't do with the property as a result of the designation. What he did do was speak to how the non-conforming designation came about, which tells all of you that he knows how it came about and that it came about prior to the time that he purchased the property. He tells you that in the email. And then he gets to the point where he says that this designation shouldn't be in place in perpetuity. And that he's talked to lawyers and they agree that we should be able to change our land development regulations to accommodate him. So my question, Commissioners, is do you have a desire to change the countywide land development regulations so that this piece of property can be designated a conforming lot that is currently designated a non-conforming lot? I spoke to Mr. Pavat about this and then in an attempt to see if he and I were in agreement on some of the, what should be the most important issues associated with this. And we agree that, one, this gentleman can sell the property. He could sell the property today. But he would have to disclose that it's a non-conforming lot. He can live in the property, on the property. He can live in the house that's on the property.
That was my question, is it livable condition?
It's in livable condition. He could live in the house. He could rent that house if he chose to do so. So he is not without uses, the typical uses for a house, even though the lot itself is designated non-conforming. And that's because of its size. It has a non-conforming designation on it because of the size of the piece of property. But he could live in the house, he could rent the house, he could sell the house. So he has options with the property. That designation has not precluded him from doing with that property what most people might want to do with a piece of property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen's wanting to speak?
Yes, sir. We'll have board discussion and then I'll allow you to throw the podium to speak. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Harris or Mr. Pavat?
To Mr. Pavat, Mr. Harris, whoever can answer this question. The gentleman knew that he had, was buying this problem, buying this property and knowing that it was non-conforming. He was instructed about that. Quite sure he was.
We didn't speak to him about it before he bought the property. Or at least I was, there was no inquiry to my office before he bought the property. But apparently he has indicated to us that he was aware it was non-conforming when he bought the property.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is for probably Mr. Harris or Mr. Pavat. Obviously, I'm sure this is not the only piece of property.
We've got a little question.
The only piece of property that has been in non-conforming. What do, or what have others done in our county when they resell? Is it just having to disclose the fact when you sell it that it is non-conforming?
I am, I have not been advised that. But I'm certain that when you go to sell the piece of property under a Florida Supreme Court case, you have to disclose, it's the Davis case, you have to disclose everything on the property that you know that might affect the actual value of the property. And as part of that, and what title companies, you know, when they go to insure, you know, properties on there, the owner has to provide an affidavit and certification that it is conforming with the LDRs, you know, locally. And I think that's, I am sure not being able to make that statement may have some effect on the value of the property that he would like to sell.
Got you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I get this correct, this is about the value of the property, not about the. about the use of the property according to what you're saying. He's got full use of the property the way he needs to.
Yeah, I don't have any idea if it's about the value or if it's about something else.
I know, but it sounds like.
But I'm just, I'm just telling you that there are uses on the property that are traditional uses of the piece of real estate.
This, this question for counsel would be, is there any other uses that someone normally would have in a conforming, in a conforming property that he does not have with a non-conforming property?
Yeah. Well, looking from a use of structure or a use of land standpoint, two different things. Use of land, the answer is no, because it's residential and it continues to be residential. There's no denial anywhere, you know, long there. When you address it under the LDRs, though, the particular structure that's there is a home, and the structure was built on a property that is, is an Ag 1 designation. So after September of 1991, if you're going to build a new home on, you know, it has to be five acres or more. Everything that was existing at 1991 has a lot of record, which his lot, that particular lot, he didn't own it at the time, but that particular lot was a one acre lot, and therefore it became conforming, you know, automatically is a non-conforming, but it can continue to exist as conforming under the new rules as long as it stayed there. The problem became that after 1991, the owner of that one acre property sold a portion of it, and that made it then non-conforming. And that, therefore, you can still continue to use it and, you know, as whatever its present use was. But the theory of non-conforming uses, as stated, you know, in statute and in our, our LDRs, is you want to eliminate non-conforming uses over a period of time after they have expired from their present use, so that it can then be converted back property to be able to be used in consist, consistently, you know, with the LDRs. Now, working all the way around and saying all that as a principle, you know, behind the thing, really the only thing that would happen on the property for his present use as a residential property is if it comes down to when a structure is destroyed by more than 50% of the replacement value of the property, they would not be able to reconstruct the property, I mean, the building, back on that particular piece without then that piece and size of area then complying. He's not prohibited from repairing the place, anything that had to do with health or safety, replacing the roof or replacing the plumbing or electrical inside there for repairs, he's not prohibited from being able to do that. But, but he's also not allowed to move it, move the house around on the property. But other than that, when you get down to, there's a potential that if the house burned down, he cannot, excuse me, he also cannot enlarge the house.
Oh.
You know, the, right now, the, the house, whatever the square footage is on the house, he would not be able to enlarge the structure that would be there because of that non-conforming use. But that's the, that's the two things, you can't enlarge it, and you couldn't rebuild it if it burned down or lost more than 50% of its value in a casualty event.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It says that it's 3.5 acres and a subdivision of one acre homes. So that still limit anything, you said if it burned down, and obviously if it burned down, the owner would never be able to rebuild on that property?
That is correct. If it went all the way to more than 50%.
Is that the same for the one acre homes? Is it?
No, sir. The one acre lots that are out there around it, they were all in existence as an unrecorded subdivision prior to September of 1991.
Okay, so they're grandfathered.
Therefore, they're grandfathered in, if you want to use that term.
Okay.
They're grandfathered in. Anything happens on those, you know, it would be fine.
The significance of 1991 is really that the state had created a deadline of 1992.
Yes.
Wherein all counties had to adopt comprehensive land use plans. And in those comprehensive land use plans, they also incorporated land development regulations that kind of mirrored the comp plan itself. And it's a very exhaustive outline of what can and can't be done with properties, but particularly the state recognized a problem with just constant unrestricted division of properties that were particularly in something akin to a subdivision. So that's why we also have subdivision rules, where now it says if you're going to build a subdivision or develop a subdivision, you have to pave roads and all those other things that have created problems for us in this county. So they spoke to existing subdivisions at the time, and they recognized a parcel of record as of the time of the adoption of the comprehensive land use plan. And this particular case in Swanee County was in 1991, just before the 1992 deadline.
And the, and the, the lot of record was not 3.5 acres at the time, it was a one acre.
An acre lot.
Yeah, that, rest of it has since been added to it after it was non-conforming. And I believe, Mr. Privat, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, the problem comes in not that it's less or more than an acre now, it's the way the LDR reads is the original track.
The parcel of record.
The parcel of record.
Parcel of record.
So by adding more to it, it doesn't clear the property, you have to add, add the original piece that was removed. And that piece has not been available for the landowner to reobtain it, to put the original parcel of record back together.
The one-third acre.
Mm-hmm.
My, my understanding of this is that the property owner attempted to cure the problem by purchasing the additional land, but it does not go back and recreate the parcel of record at the time of adoption, and that would be true throughout the entire county. I mean, this isn't something limited to this location. This is all over the county. There are lots of these types of issues.
Even if he made it up to five acres, as he would say, to no avail.
If he made it to 100 acres, it still wouldn't be in compliance with the comp plan and the LDRs.
Okay. So the question, like, because in his, in his email to us, I just want to clarify.
I believe if he made it to five acres, it would be complying.
Yep.
Because it's an Ag 1 and five acres, I believe.
Yeah, but he's been unable to, to complete that.
The other acres.
Just didn't want to sell it.
But he does say that, he says, I bought both of these lots, combined them back into 3.5 acres, and, and I, the question is, is where did it start out at? Did it start out as a five acre lot?
No.
Or did it start out as a 3.5?
They were all one acre, they were all one acre lots originally.
They were all one acre lots, and.
The additional land that was purchased was more recently, does not include the property that had been sold off of it.
Right.
That property that had been sold off of the original parcel of record went to an adjoining property owner, that person still owns it. So this individual purchased some additional land somewhere and just kind of reconfigured the shape of the property. So it's larger than what it had been originally, but it is not the parcel of record.
Okay.
That had previously existed at the time of the adoption of the comp plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Did I hear, what do y'all say, that the original landowner had sold off some property?
Sold off a third of the acre.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. One more question. Would, in any way, shape, or form, granting this petition or request.
You, you can't.
Cause us to.
Ran it on a single, individual record of our.
Cause us to do anything short of changing our LDRs?
I'll let attorney answer that.
In other words, if we were to consider this request, we'd have to make changes to our LDRs, which are according to state regulations?
Yes, sir. I mean.
So we can't change it?
I'm, I'm taking this request as, tonight, you don't have the authority to grant him the request. You can't say, boom, it's now conforming.
Here, here's the purpose of my bringing this up tonight. Purpose of bringing it up tonight is, one, three of you Commissioners have had your phones in meltdown recently over this, and you've been pressured to instruct Mr. Harris to do something. Well, I did something when this first started. I contacted the county attorney and we met and discussed it, and we have no solution that can be applied universally countywide. The only solution that can be created would have to be created by this board, and the purpose of me bringing this up tonight is to ask you a question. Do you have a desire to create a solution that would be applied universally countywide? Some would argue that, well, maybe we could create a provision for a variance application, and you could do that, but if you do that, you're going to entertain these questions for a long time, and they're all going to be different. But what you're going to do, at the very least, is you're going to deviate from what the intent of the state was when they imposed this mandate on the adoption of these comp plans and LDRs. I mean, really, the question is, do we have a, I, I was involved shortly thereafter, okay? I, I dealt with a lot of comp plan amendments and LDRs and went to Tallahassee and argued with the Department of Community Affairs that was charged with handling these issues for counties. And what they were attempting to do is force the issue of divisions occurring on properties that could be platted into subdivisions and meet subdivision requirements. They were trying to put a stop to these divisions of existing parcels. And that occurred with the adoption of comp plan amendments. Now, some revisions have occurred since that time in any number of counties throughout the state, and they deal with those on a county-by-county basis, but on a broad scale, it hasn't occurred. And the first question then becomes, is there something that you can do to, at the same time, preserve the intent of legislature when they impose the mandate? What can you do that preserves that intent? That divisions on parcels of record as of that date certain occur in subdivisions? Is there something you can do to this thing that furthers that cause? I don't think so. But that's why ultimately, in the most recent discussion I had with the county attorney, the question was, are there uses on the property? Are conventional uses available today on that property? And the answer is yes. So I don't know, again, I told you then in the conversation, I had requested some written response on what cannot be done on the property that someone wants to, because if we knew what that was, we might be able to fix that problem. But like I said in this email, I can't tell you what cannot be done on the property. All I can tell you from the email is that the owner has knowledge of when the property was split. They even tell you why it was split. They said it was because the original owner split it to help pay their taxes or something. And it tells you that more land was purchased since then, and there's a, an interest expressed in the email that our LDRs be changed to accommodate this non-conforming issue.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have a problem at some point in the future trying to understand this a little bit more clearly with the variances and different things, but I don't understand this whole concept of, in reality, of these, where we have the legal right to make adjustments, where we don't, with, with variances, and, and really to what end that we're trying to accomplish, that we're trying to accomplish with these changes. So, but it sounds very clear from counsel that we have no right to make any changes tonight.
Oh, well, you can't change your LDRs without multiple public hearings and.
So.
Notifying Tallahassee and re, I mean, it's a little more than just a, just a board meeting.
This, again, is just a question of.
Want to talk about it?
Direction.
Right.
Does the board have a desire to change your LDRs?
And I, I don't.
I believe by changing the LDRs, it probably will clear up some non-conforming issues, but I, I think it's going to open another box of, of lots, you know, where do you stop?
Yeah.
And, and if it's, if it's a special exception or, or anything, I mean, it comes forward to board for public hearing, and then at, at what point can you deny? And, and so I think overall, you're low in your density.
Like I said, based upon my understanding of it, I have no desire to make any changes with it. I wouldn't mind learning more about it, but at this point, there's obviously nothing that I want to do, make changes. And I would be, and I would be open to what my constituents would have to say. If they read the paper or hear anything about it, contact me, but other than that, no. Y'all have anything to add, Bo, or?
No, I, I'll just mention that I've had similar issues, but they were able to be rectified and taken care of, purchasing other properties and things of that nature. But, if we can't do it, we can't do it.
Mr. Privat, as far as us doing it, trying to defend anything, or as far as what you might think we'd be opening up, or do you have a recommendation you're willing to share one way or the other, or?
If we're concerned about a lawsuit tonight over this particular issue, do not lose one minute of sleep about something like that. This is not that type of, not that type of issue. This particular piece of property was addressed by the, the P and Z Board over 18 months ago. I say over about 18 months ago, and it, it was denied this. They had an opportunity, the, the landowner did, to, you know, appeal that to this board and then moving forward to appeal to circuit court, they did not do so. However, they waited for over a year's period of time and then filed a second application for variance with the, with P and Z. I am aware that there was some discussion between council, landowner, and our, and our P and Z department, sorry, Bo, and our P and Z department, you know, with regard to, you know, moving forward with that particular application, but shortly after those discussions, the application was withdrawn. So there is no legal issue out there to be fighting at this point.
All right. And in all fairness, Mr. Crotty, he, he's just simply asking for workshops to talk about possibility of looking into it. But again, that's a, that seems like a, a whole new course in real estate law that I don't, I don't get into. Anyone else? You good?
Mr. Crotty?
Mike's yours, sir.
Please identify yourself.
Wayne Crotty. I'm, I'm the owner of the properties that you gentlemen have been speaking of. Mr. Harris, we've talked.
I don't mean to interrupt you. She needs the, your address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. 9451 Southwest County Road 143. That's Jasper, Florida.
Thank you.
32052. Most of what Mr. Harris has already explained to you, but I do want to point out a couple of things that I think you maybe, might have been overlooked, but it's been touched on is, this is two parcels of property. Both of them were non-conforming. The first one I did buy non-conforming, aware of that. The second one, I, I bought it, real quick, got some direction actually from staff, building department, because your zoning guy was out, that, yeah, you know, you're short a third of acre, you add a third back, you should be good. And him and I, neither one were aware of the specific language in the LDRs requiring it to be the same legal description. So, you know, that's, that's how I went ahead with acquiring the other property. And at this point, it's three and a half acres and a one acre subdivision, I think most of you are aware of. The neighborhood is certainly for being able to use the property with full development rights, which is what my email said to you, Mr. Harris, that's what I can't do with it. I don't have any development rights on the property because of the non-conforming status. I can't add a swimming pool to the house like my neighbor has on one acre lot. I've got three and a half acres, but I can't upgrade my kitchen, make it bigger. But I can't upgrade my kitchen, make it bigger. There's a lot of things I can't do there. I'm paying full property taxes, you know, the property appraisers. There's no conditions on, you know, what the value is of the property with the property appraiser, other than, you know, full value. So I'm paying full taxes but don't have the rights that everybody else has. I think the state comp plan and the LDRs were created with the intent to control the growth and the urban sprawl and the split of properties, as you mentioned, and it's done a very good job of that. The regulations, for the most part, have taken care of all the situations. But as with any regulation, any law, there's always some gray area or some exception that, you know, it doesn't quite fit. And that's the reason that you've got 27 special exceptions in the LDRs at this point. Those are special exceptions to the LDRs. And I have proposed to a number of you that we might want to look at adding a 28th special exception, which would provide for this board to address this situation and maybe other ones similar to it. Understand that a lot of people are able to work out and purchase other property and correct the defaults. I've tried to do that. I've approached all the property owners around, and I tried that before I went to the variance board. So it brings me to this point. I'm, you know, I'm kind of up against it. I know it's not y'all's problem, maybe some bad business decisions. But as I've related before, other counties, you know, have similar problems to this, so you're not unique. In other counties, I've sat on a variance board myself and chaired the board down in Osceola County, and we have granted variances when people were short five acres, you know, for a sufficient reason. You know, obviously hardship has to exist, and you have to have tried to buy other property. You've tried to resolve everything else, and that's what the variance is for. But the variance committee was not willing to accept it because they follow staff's recommendations as they should. And I think staff has followed direction from Mr. Pravat on, you know, whether the variance would qualify. And it's for those reasons that we didn't, I didn't, withdrew this last application for variance because we were, you know, thinking, you know, from talking with staff, that maybe this is the direction that we needed to go to resolve the situation. So I'm, you know, I'm here just trying to, you know, correct the situation in the county with some property that, you know, there's two parcels, not one. You know, we've made two bad situations a lot better, but we're not fitting that A to Z stipulation that's in the regulations. So I would like to be able to have my development rights to the property. I'd like to be able to, you know, upgrade it. I'd like to not be able to worry about it burning down. It's kind of hard to invest in the neighborhood and the property if, you know, one day all I'm going to have is three and a half acres of vacant land, you know, and not be able to do anything with it. So, you know, that's where I'm at. I appreciate your time, and I know that this is kind of off the cuff, and I don't want to take any more of your time tonight. But if there's opportunity to further discussion, I would welcome that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
They'll have any direction for Mr. Harris?
I've got a question. At what point do, I mean, having heard that side and understanding it a little bit better, you go back and you start thinking about these subdivisions and such. We have a lot of folks that are... Property sizes vary in a lot of ways, and some old decisions made for subdivisions that are based upon that law or that lack of law and direction in the county or in the state at the time. But if we have a... I don't understand why a person who owns three and a half acres inside of a platted subdivision or that's one-acre lots can't somehow be, in some way, become conforming, even though the original lot does not... The lot does not meet the legal description of the original lot that was part of that subdivision. It just seems to me... I know what we end up doing is, if we make too many changes, people will buy like five lots in a subdivision, then they want to make one big gigantic lot and make changes there. I'm not talking about that. I'm trying to figure out a way that we can help our homeowners do what's right with their property, but also do what's best for their neighborhood. And I don't think either one of these... I'm not sure that either one of these things are being accomplished right here at this point. We're just being legal. And I may be unclear in what I'm saying, but I'm thinking through in my mind, and that's...
That's precisely what the state required, was that we be legal.
But they allow for variances within counties.
Here's what you run into. Well, I could never speak to all of the potential issues that you run into, but there are several. One of the easy ones is the five-acre rule that you require of everyone else. And if you're going to require the five-acre rule of everyone else today that is subdividing property into the five acres and meeting that minimum threshold, then how do you entertain their comments when they come in here and say, well, you're making me do five acres, but you're allowing someone else to do something less? The state said, we're going to make this legal, and this is how we're going to define legal. We're going to recognize parcels of record by, as of this date certain. And all 67 counties in the state of Florida will adopt your comp plans sometime before 1992, and that's what happened. Now, in the case of this county and many other rural counties, they utilized regional planning councils to write a lot of those LDRs because no one had the staff to write it themselves. Some of your larger communities use their own staff to do that if they had professional planners in place. I can't say that I agree with everything that's been done. In fact, I can say in many cases in my past, I saw things that I absolutely disagreed with. I won't bring them up now, but I spent a lot of time arguing with the state in Tallahassee. When they required the adoption of the comp plan prior to '92, after that, the legislature created the Department of Community Affairs to administer it and to police it, essentially is what they were doing, to ensure that things were being done in every county in accordance to the comp plans. So every time we wanted a large-scale amendment to create a large development, we had to go to Tallahassee and Balo and burn incense and get them to agree that we could do it. And they ensured that we had paved roads and retention ponds and sidewalks and everything else that they required at the time. And there weren't, you know, what were the impacts to the school district? And what were the impacts to your roadways? Did you have transportation concurrency? And all these other things that they wanted to measure development by. That was the purpose of this. So all of those issues become a part of the equation when you say, let's reach down here and consider making a change to this. So they were trying to put a stop to continually continuing to subdivide parcels of record as of that date certain. Whether you agree or disagree with it, that's what they were trying to accomplish. And they've got a lot of mechanisms in place for measuring what they were trying to accomplish.
In this case, am I wrong? In this case, in that this lot, three and a half acres' worth of land, exists in a subdivision of one-acre houses?
Yeah, but it's a grandfathered-in subdivision.
Grandfathered-in, yes, I understand that.
I do not believe that the... All of the three and a half acres is within the one-acre subdivision. Believe only one-half of an acre is within the unrecorded subdivision.
Okay, I didn't know.
This, the other property is with it, joins it on the north side, but it's not in the subdivision.
Okay. That's a piece of the puzzle that I didn't have before. Thank you.
Yeah, now, where... What he's talking about is being, creating a second problem for himself is that because he's bought property now that's outside of the subdivision...
It isn't five acres either.
It isn't five acres either.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, so that makes sense.
Okay, I get it.
I got a clear understanding.
I was wondering why you're going back to the five-acre rule. I understand the five-acre rule with other problems. I was going, we're not talking about that, are we? Apparently we were, so...
Did you have any other questions? Mr. Fleming? They'll have anything else? You'll have a direction on what you want Mr. Harris to do as far as, I mean...
I think it pretty much speaks for itself. That's my thinking, my understanding was...
He's pointing to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. My understanding is that I didn't realize that it was outside of this subdivision of the property that was purchased. So it pretty much just speaks clearly what we are doing here. If you make changes throughout the county, that is going to create other problems, you know, elsewhere. But what he has is property in the subdivision and property outside of the subdivision, so it don't meet those requirements.
Anyone else?
No. And I just... I agree. It kind of speaks for itself, and I've been told this. I've asked this, like I say, I've run into it before. Mr. Harris and Mr. Pravat have pretty much said the same thing in the past.
All right. Did you have any other additional agenda items, Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
This time we'll open the floor to public comment and concerns. Anyone wishing to speak, they'll make their way to the podium, name and address for the record.
Any issue?
I'll be turning 70 here in a couple of days.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. I'm cursed with long life. I'm John Koch, 1-805-289th Road. For the past seven weeks, I've been a lister with the United States Census. And you talk about roads and places that ain't roads. We talked about one tonight. I'll tell you, I've been to places. I've been stuck a number of times and a few. But the point is, is that Swanee County has been undercounted for the past 30 years, and part of that is, is that there wasn't enough people to go out to your address and to confirm that address so that the census forms, which you as individuals and citizens are responsible for filling out, or those questions you wish. I can honestly say at this point with assurance that 90% of the addresses listed have been counted. I was in the 5th District, 4th District, and 3rd District, and even into Lafayette County a few times to help them out. But I also told them that as service to this country for a second time and tired of seeing Swanee County or hearing Swanee County has been undercounted in a very important count as required by our constitution, that I was going to do something about it this time. And I know I counted them, and I found a few. And there were a few places where maybe I stretched the rules a little bit to make sure that those houses were counted and they would get their forms. And I can honestly say the first phase has been successful, 90-plus percent. I won't know for a few days. This brings to the second phase, which is going to be done between now and when those forms are going to be sent out. And when those forms are going to be sent out, we have a committee, which is chaired by that man right over there. And I have transferred my allegiance as a lister, as a government agent, to his resources. And I will do my best to use the public media to get this across. But it's important, those of you, every one of you that's in this room now, I'm charging you would tell your friends and neighbors, when that form comes, fill it out, because it is very important that we be counted for many reasons. Whether you agree or not, it is the law to be counted. How deep you wish to be counted is left up to you, but be counted. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, if I may.
You may.
Thank you. This issue, I feel for the gentleman that was here on the lot situation because he's trying to do the right thing. But dang it, don't budge. I'm of the firm, believe you ain't shouldn't be out there for anything less than 40 acres. Now, come on. A five-acre lot puts pressure on my 40 acres and that kind of development in the taxing assessments. They don't belong there. It gives this man over there in the corner a headache because he has to find them when they don't put addresses on the homes. We don't need to be splitting up the rural areas. We need to be putting them back together and moving that growth closer to Branford, Dowling Park, Wellburn, McAlpin, O'Brien, and Livock where the resources for the city services can be provided, and we can do something about keeping our local environment. Enough said.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, can I speak to something he said brought up? And it's not directly related to census, and it's not directly related to the property division, but it is directly related to those roads. Because, and I think that the commission ought to consider somehow, some way, at least, consider what we can do legally. I was on a road, this, a subdivision, probably, I don't know when it was platted or anything else, but it was a subdivision where, obviously, we don't provide any maintenance to the roads. We don't provide, we don't do anything. They're private roads. Two problems with the road that I was on. Number one, it's listed in the mapping as, with one name. And number two, it has another name or number, blue sign, on 49 where it comes off of, which is confusing, number one, confusing to our EMS and our fire who are responding out there because they have, their addresses are, is the... Their addresses represent the original name of the road, but the new name of the road is sitting on 49. So we had a hard time finding it. Second thing is, is that road is so sandy. I have a truck and barely could get through it. And I know we don't have, these private roads, we don't deal with, but there ought to be some requirement that we give to these neighborhoods or whatever, for at least our EMS and fire to be able to get back to them. That road right there, you have to run through it about 30 miles an hour just to get through the sandy spots on it. And I know we're in a dry area, but, you know, dry time of the year, but is there anything we can do to make sure that we can get our folks, our emergency responders, out to these people?
We can increase the speed limit sign out there.
Yeah, well, yeah. And I'm not joking in any way, shape, or form. This was a major concern because it's a dead-end street, and there's a pregnant lady and a disabled man out there on the end of it.
I don't know that you can do anything to answer the fact. The problem is, those were recognized as existing unofficial roadways many, many years ago, so they just got incorporated into the mix.
They got incorporated in for 911 mapping is why they got named.
Private roads, and they're recognized with a number just for the purposes of 911.
We attempted to do something for them, and that was the MSBU. And when we brought those numbers and studied all that, you see...
Yeah, they can't afford to do the improvement.
We've tried. I mean, it's not that we don't want to.
Yeah.
What it boils down to, it's a private road on private property. Most of it's an easement going through each section of property, and most of those were developed, not all of them, but a lot of them, with the homeowners' associations. And the property owners have chose over the years not to maintain the property registration.
No, I totally understand that. And in fact, I did share with them about the MSBU program. It's unfortunate that there's folks that are out there that are going to need services that they're not going to be able to get, because we're not going to be able to get out to them.
Well, I'm going to... I ran into this two years ago. I don't mean two as in the number two, also years ago, when there was a big discussion on creating a bus service in another county. And the whole argument with some people was, well, look, we live way out there in the middle of nowhere, and we can't get to the store. way out there in the middle of nowhere, and we can't get to the store. You know, a lot of people need to think about those things before they buy way out in the middle of nowhere. And that's, that's a big part of the problem. So, government's supposed to have a burden to step in then and try to shore up a bad decision by some people. And that doesn't always work.
There is an option for every private road out there, that, for the county to take over the maintenance of it. And there's a form, Public Work has it, that they have to go through, a certain amount of, they have that certain amount of road mileage, or I think, certain amount of population per mile of road, or four, quarter mile of road. They got to bring it up to a certain standard, and then the board has to vote to adopt it.
They have to pave the road.
Yeah.
They have to pave the road. So, they've, there is an option.
I didn't say it was a cheap option. I said it was an option.
Yeah.
I think in this, in this particular case, it was, it was, it was created, the bigger problem was created, because somebody apparently got a hold of a grater from Anderson, I would assume that it was Anderson Club, because they were out there on the roads. Somebody got a grater, and you can tell it was a grater, and they, they basically tore up most of the grass that was out there, and it created a big sand pocket. But it seems like more of a civil issue than.
Yes, sir.
I will let you guys, let Mr. Richardson know, during the MSBU talks, we had several in District 1 as well. Mr. Harris knows this, knows the road. It was way too much, as we all understand. And the landowners on this particular road got together and hired a local company to come out, fix the road up, and now they maintain it on a quarterly basis. And it's, it's cheap. I mean, it was.
Yeah, I actually spoke to one in your district the other day. It's not one that they're maintaining, but they brought in eight or nine loads of lime rock and built it up.
I know where you're talking about.
Rather off 104th, First Road to the right.
Yep. And that was just a better option, money-wise, and everyone was able to, the landowners were able to get together, pull together, and make it happen.
Thank you.
Anyone else's public comment? If you make your way to the podium, name an address for the record.
Hi, my name is Mary Gay Chapels. I'm from South Florida, but we have been up here for about 15 years, and we brought our program from down south, which was an educational program in Broward County, serving most of South Florida. And we brought it up here and expanded. And we've been growing and expanding ourselves, family-supported, so to speak. We're nonprofit. We're called Mystic Jungle. And we teach from soup to nuts. We teach water conservation, land conservation. We're licensed with both Fish and Game and USDA, and we're overseen by them. Our board consists of a veterinarian, a Fish and Game retired official, who was in South Florida at the time. We have a cattlemen who works down south with the universities and teach cattle techniques for insemination, artificial insemination, testing for pregnancy. We do this all free. He's also on our board. We have 10 people on our board. We have a Sioux Indian, who is one of the only residents down on the West Coast, down south. And I can't remember the name of the preserve down there, but he fought to preserve it and save it, and he's considered the bear whisperer in Florida. He has hundreds of bears that are down there that hang around him, and he can walk through them, and they don't bother him. We have support from a senator down there. What we're doing, and I'm going to pass it out to you so you can see it, we're asking for a resolution. We don't want any money from you. We go to an average of 11 libraries in the immediate four or five counties, and it's free. We put on a program, sometimes two or three, depending on how many people show up for it. And we take what we call the little critters. We don't take any of our tigers, or leopards, or any of those. We're full contact, but it's my son, his wife, and his son. The reason we do this is to teach people that you don't want to go and have an iguana, or a boa constrictor. They're really cool when they're little, and then when they get big and they're eating sheep, they turn them loose in the Everglades. We have a major problem in the Everglades with boa constrictors. So, our program is designed to teach conservation, how each and every one of either a child or an adult can make a difference in what they do. And I'm 82 years old. I've done this for, since I've been 15 years old. I was a 4-H leader down there and had over 100 kids for almost 20 years. I live out. I've raised cattle, 100 head of cattle. I've shrunk that down. I'm not as fast as I used to be. Now, I deal with sheep. And so, I have about 100 head down south that I run sheep on. And I still have programs down there. Not as big as we used to work for Broward County inner-city children. I've lived long enough to see these kids come back. They didn't have a future, most of the inner-city kids. They now work for, well, right down the street, one of my kids is down there. He's no longer a kid. He has a teenage daughter. But he works for South Broward Drainage, and he's got a half a dozen degrees. And he's very well thought of. In fact, he left for a year, and they said, please don't resign, just come back. I've got probably two dozen that have come back from the inner city, that have gone into things they never thought of. And when they're exposed to something they're not familiar with, it creates a very big interest in them. And I've always believed in feely, touchy, smelly. I think that when a child can go out there and get this close to a tiger, and listen to a tiger chuff to him, and talk to him, and not growl, or strike him, or run at him, it makes a difference in their psyche. If you go to a zoo, you will find that those animals are way off. The kids can't really see them. So, it's not the zookeeper's fault. It's because people go there, and these animals are exposed for, say, let's say, eight hours, to screaming kids, running people, yelling, hollering. So, they get as far away from it as they can. But in our case, we do a tour of not more than 25. We have schoolchildren come. We have handicapped. Right now, we're working with a lot of autistic children, and it's fascinating to see the difference it makes. I come from a long line of teachers. My daughter is a teacher. She has a master's in LD. She's taught for 22 years, 4th and 5th grade. Her daughter works at FIU. She now teaches 5 and under autistic children. My son's daughter is now getting her master's in therapy, and she has worked for over 15 years with abandoned children who are severely handicapped. They are really in more of a hospital situation, and she's a therapist and works with them. My uncles were physics and calculus professors at Newark University. As I said, I come from a long line of teachers, teachers and farmers. My mother was in Pennsylvania, 14 children, and they farmed during the Depression. So, and from there, they became teachers. My father would teach people how to build. He was a builder, and he would take a lot of children and teach them how to build. So, it's important. We don't have that anymore. Our schools today have streamlined to the point, children don't know how to cook. They don't have shop. They don't have anything that's substantial for them to go out and do. I mean, they can work computers. They can make an A on the board. We have had college from four universities here come for a day. When they come for a day, they don't, they love it, but they don't get enough. They've traveled an hour, maybe two hours, from wherever they're coming. And then they spend maybe four hours, and after the four hours, they have to drive back home. And what we're doing, and I'm going to hand this out, we're asking for a resolution from you. Not right this minute, but we'd like to have it as soon as possible. We, I have a lawyer in my town who wrote this up for us. He's supporting us. He's been up here. He knows what we do. I also have a senator down there who's going to present it. And we're asking for, we want a pavilion. We've had the schools ask us to take 150 kids at one shot. We only take 25 children through the tour at a time. So, the other children need to be in an area where we can use the smaller critters and lecture, or go into, say, preserving the water and keeping the water clean, or doing ground preservation. So, we need that pavilion to keep them in an area. The other thing that we're asking for is, we lost our house there. It was $140,000 home during that 100-year flood. And I'll tell you funny, quickie on this. I kept all the paperwork and did all the insurance and so on and so forth. They told me I was in the 100-year flood zone. I didn't need it. That was 40, that was about seven years before the flood, and we lost the house. So, we stripped it real fast, dried it out, and now we want to convert it into a place where we can take children, teenagers that want to come there and spend a week. And we will keep them there, and no charge to them, so that they can feely, touchy, smelly. Well, we have 200 acres, and we have all sorts of stock on it. We have livestock. And my son, about four or five years ago, maybe a little bit more, did a four-county soil exam. And they kept coming up and saying, well, how much are they paying you? Nothing. We believe that that's education, that you have to reach out to these kids, and you have to help them. It's not about money. But right now, we need the state to help us just do. We bought the buildings. We need the buildings to be put up. And it's easier to buy the building than it is to put the insulation, the electric, and everything else you need. We need the hospital. We work, we have the building for the hospital. We work with a veterinarian. He's excellent. And he will work with us. We want, and then we can have the kids come in, and they can watch it. We want the prep room. We have the building. We need the prep room established.
Ms. Mary?
Yeah.
So, so they know exactly what you're doing. They, they service Swanee County and all the surrounding counties, libraries, the school system, with a nonprofit teaching.
We've been to 11 libraries on a regular basis.
They're at several of our local events. They were at McAlpin Community Days, this last go-around, with a whole host of animals. They're very active in the community, but they're not asking anything from us, other than a resolution. They're going.
Just support us.
County to county. They've got, with their, with the representatives, with the senators that are proposing a, pushing, working on a grant with them. And part of the grant process is the counties that they serve, giving them a resolution of support. I asked her to come tonight to bring a copy of the resolution for y'all to look over, for Mr. Pravat to look over, and then have it on either the, one of the next meetings for our consideration. That's kind of summing up what you're after?
Yeah, absolutely.
If you want to pass that out.
I have, yeah, I have the resolution here. And I hope all of you will come by and see.
Thank you.
What we are and what we do.
Thank you.
And we have.
Thank you, ma'am.
People coming from around the world, because we're on Facebook. They've been from Australia, Africa, and we're working with Asia, because we're trying to save the leopards of Asia.
Thank you.
If you want to look at this, and the surprise in this was that Swanee County Electric came by on the tour, and you know, what you about it, and they mailed us our light bills. And inside was, on the front cover, was our lion. And then they wrote an article about it, and had other pictures, and it's in there. If you get a light bill from them, you've probably got it. So, we hope that you'll come by and see it and support it. And everyone, the children from all schools, we've had homeschool, we have vets, and we work with probation people, because they're the most important.
I thank you for coming. I'm going to have Mr. Pravat look over, and as long as he don't have any issues with the way it's written, we'll have it on the next agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I want to, before she left, I want to ask her a question of the gentleman in the back. I think, is this the place that I think I met you? You told me that was the best-kept secret in Swanee County?
Yes, I'm one of the owners.
Okay.
I'm Mark Chapels, 13429 South Highway, 129. We are three miles from the John Beer Dealership, right on 129. If you really hit me, I recognize it right away. You know, you guys are one of the tigers. Anybody who lives close there, if you hear any funny noises right now, that's our lions talking to everybody. We have two male lions, weigh about 500 pounds right now. And we're full contact. That's my son. He interacts with the lion almost every day. And if you guys come out for a tour, we do tours every Saturday, so, 11 to 4, and we run them about every hour, hour and a half. It's great. You guys will never, ever, ever be able to have anywhere else. That's all I can say. I mean, if you tell us you're up close, if you can smell them, if you can hear them, just don't stand in the evening.
Yeah, they're bad about that. We have a variety of tigers. We're not a collector of tigers. It's to show you the different types of tigers. We go from Siberian to the Royal, to the Bengal. And we have leopards, and they're different.
I don't know if any of you know it, but we also have two cats that belong to Tarzan.
Tarzan.
Played Tarzan right after riding White Horse, and we moved two by them to be close to the tigers, and just passed away.
Three months ago?
Yeah.
Thank you all so much. I said, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, all right, we'll move on to administrative comments. Mr. Harris, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Richardson, do you have anything for us?
Just let you all know that me and Mr. Norris went out to the North Florida, oh, oh, yeah, 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 and a couple of other folks here. Catherine was there at the North Florida Economic Development Partnership. I guess it was an all-day class on Friday, and it was very enlightening as to what Jimmy actually does. I didn't know he did anything, other than driving around in his big SUV. No, actually, he does, he does a lot of work, and, and to hear a lot about economic development and such like that, the, I think it's something that we, every one of us should, should be a part of next time they offer it, and, and gives us a lot of insight into what it takes to grow our jobs in this county.
Yeah, I wasn't able to make it, but I got several text messages. She said, y'all are stars of the show.
I heard that.
Yeah.
You heard that, too?
I heard that, too.
No comment.
Ms. Thumming, you got anything for us?
No, sir, I don't have anything.
Ms. Hill?
No, just want to thank everybody, all the hard work our staff does, and I appreciate you, Commissioners. Appreciate Mr. Gamble, Mr. Harris. Monday, it was our, Monday delegation wasn't able to be there, but I appreciate you guys representing us. Thank you.
Ms. Stapleton?
I first would like to just thank these 4-H girls. I mean, they, they come for the long haul tonight.
They did.
And they step out here with us. I'd just like to, was a very touching day for Chief Summers. Two flags, that's awesome. Just keep his kids in our prayers. They look to be doing well, though. I'm proud of both of them, for what they've dealt with, and how they're persevering. And other than that, we got home. other than that, we got homecoming this week for Swanee. We prayed on Friday, then we got hooked on Heroes on Saturday. And I know Commissioner Gamble and Commissioner Hell's a big part of that. And I appreciate both of you for doing that and representing us.
Me, too.
That's all I got.
You bring up the homecoming. Is everybody in for the?
Yeah, I've got signs and he's got the golf cart if everybody's able to attend.
Ms. Fleming?
Yes, sir.
All right.
What time it start? Three, four o'clock?
I think it's earlier than that.
I couldn't tell you. They're going to line up in the same place?
I believe they are.
Much, a little shorter area, but yeah.
We'll get staff to get a message to you, Mr. Fleming.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There is one thing I need to mention. Because I just received an update on this. We talked about yesterday the EOC requesting funding for a new EOC and the fire station.
Correct.
With the representative and the senator. I went back and met with Sharon, had her call the Division of Emergency Management because we have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant we're using for designing the EOC. They do not have, this, we got the answer to the question, there is not in place a dedicated source of funding for constructing the EOC. So my plan would be to not apply for that in the current year, but go ahead and apply for the funding for the fire station. Spend several months going ahead and getting the design work completed for the EOC, paid for with that grant that we have for that purpose, and then apply next year for EOC funding.
I'm fine with it. Anyone got any questions or thoughts on that? I'm fine with that.
Good.
Okay.
All right. All right, sir. The only thing I have is, Ms. Betty mentioned earlier, the bookwalk in Branford, they put a lot of time and effort into that and it was a big success. And then the pregnancy crisis, walker run and fundraiser they had was a huge turnout. I was a little late to it, but what would y'all estimate was there, three hundred?
At least.
Yeah, so it was, it was, it was a good, good time. Hats off to them. Unless anybody else has anything else, I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Hell. All in favor, say aye.